We can um. Pick off the Medfield School Committee meeting. Uh, we'll start with a real call. We have to start with a real call. Sam Knight here.
Michelle Kirkley here.
Leo Brown here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frishalat here.
Great, thank you. And uh, we have, we can open up public input. I think there's nobody in the room. Is there anybody out?
There's not.
Okay, so we all said, so we can move to consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have approval of the regular minutes for February eighth. And for March fourth, two thousand twenty-four. And uh. Then the second item on the consent agenda is the donations which are outlined in the packet. I think we. Always do like to say a big thank you. Space I think it was for from M C B E. For uh, for their donations. So those are the two items out there. And uh. Think actually we do, I'm gonna ask. Hold on separately just because I was not on that two eight. So let me expand on that one. But so why don't we just take each one of those? So approval of the regular minutes for February eight, what your motion on that?
So moved, Michelle.
Second, Leo Brown.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
I just want him standing, so he's not there. Um, is there a motion for the March fourth uh, meeting, which is earlier this week, that somebody?
So moved.
Secondly, a Brown.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And then a motion to accept the donations as outlined in the packet. Their motion.
So moved, Leo Brown.
Second, Michelle.
Take all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, so going into new business, we've some uh, three topics. Uh, the first one is warrant articles. Uh, discussion of possible vote.
Sure, so uh, the town is putting together a warrant articles for annual town meeting in May. Excuse me, they have three articles that have uh, sponsorship with the school committee that are that are already written. Uh, the article numbers may change because once they do the final warrant, uh, sometimes uh, different articles are moving around. But um, I wanna just highlight uh, the three articles. One, the first one, Article fourteen, which is establishing a special education reserve fund. You'll see that part of that is in blue and highlighted in blue, and that's there because. The uh, the town attorney thinks that doesn't need to be in the actual motion, that needs to be in the um. In the description of it in the warrant book, it doesn't have to be in the actual uh, motion, but it's your option, you can keep it there if you'd like. Uh. But uh, I guess what the town has said to me is that they've seen towns do it both ways. One with the language in blue there and one without, so it's really up to you folks whether you wanna keep it there or not. But essentially this warrant, uh, excuse me, this article um, would allow the town to establish a special education reserve fund. That would allow uh, a positive vote by the school committee and the select board to to get money out of that fund to pay for special education costs. Uh, once they go over um, a threshold that is uh, much larger than the year before. So uh, the way that the the warrant committee talked to us about it was that um. If the this, the, if Desi had. What they typically have uh, extraordinary relief, which means that if you have a situation in a, in a fiscal year where you have to spend a hundred and twenty-five percent. Over what you spent the previous year, then you can apply for extraordinary relief, and it'll give you that that grant uh, to offset the cost. So what, what the warrant we would like is that we have to hit that threshold of a hundred and twenty-five percent before we could touch this. Apply for extraordinary relief, if we get it, fine, we use that money, if we don't, then we take money out of this reserve account with a positive vote for both the school committee. And of the select board, that's the only way you can access this. This was established a few years ago um, in municipal. Municipal, have to get the name of the law that gave uh, Governor Baker had had done it, had given uh, cities and towns. A lot of different ways to improve efficiencies within the government, and this was one way to do that. Uh, lots of districts around us have them, uh, it's it's a good safety net in case. You end up having a situation where a student moves in, uh, that is an outside placement uh, late in the year, and you didn't have that budget, this could, you know, help us out with that. So I think it's something we've talked about with the warrant committee in in the town for years now, and and I think it's the time is is really now to do that. Uh, they're looking at funding it with some free cash to start it out. And then the school department generates Medicaid reimbursement money, and that goes right to the free cash of the town typically. But they would like to use that as the the funding source going forward, so be the, yeah, so the 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 actual seed money would be the the free cash. And then going forward would be the Medicaid reimbursed, which I think would really work out well for us.
There's a cap on the fund though, so from the Medicaid reimbursement, it would reach a cap, and then after that, any extra Medicaid money would go back into free cash. I don't know what the timing amount would look like, I think they said the seed fund would be between two hundred to two fifty.
Right.
Start, yeah, Medicaid each year, yes, yes, a two percent.
Two percent of annual next one spending amount, which should be about seven seven hundred thousand, that's what we would have to be depending on the year. Um, but this would allow us to have that insurance policy if needed. Uh, I would see this as something as a last resort, if we don't get the state money, and we have a situation where. This would allow us to pay out of this fund instead of going to an annual town meeting or a special town meeting to fund it.
The town did not, or the state denied it, this was something that we're on to make that as well, we could still utilize this fund to make sure we're not. Lowering up the operating budget, so to speak.
Right. Is is circuit breaker coming low this year as well?
No, I think we're gonna be in good shape with circuit breaker, yeah, so one of the things that we looked at um. Give an example for this year, we we put all the information into to uh, apply for extraordinary relief, but we don't think we're gonna make the threshold. Because we're not at the hundred and twenty-five percent, even though it's more than we typically spend, and we have a couple of. Other districts that weren't in our budget that we need to fund, we might not make it, but we still submit it because. There's a lot of money there from the state, and then if X amount of people don't, you know, i- i- if there's a a lot of districts that don't uh, get that threshold of a hundred and twenty-five percent. Then they'll divvy it up to the ones that apply, so.
What does that find?
Extraordinary relief, yeah, so if you go on the circuit breaker page on Desi's website, they explain what they do, and it's not, they don't do it every year, but they're. They're offering at this year, it used to be called pothole money years ago, and then they changed it over. Used to have.
They can fix those.
Yeah, I know. You don't get it. So I would, I would ask that you would approve this um. Either with the, with the blue highlight in or out, but I think the concept, if you could sponsor this, I think it'd be a great thing for district.
And and just. What um, happened, what, how do we fund it in the, in our period?
So the the free cap, the town's gonna allocate free cash, no, I'm sorry, when we go over, like as a school committee, or as a school department, we go over in a given year? Well, if we if we had to go over a given year, you'd have a special town meeting, it's just to pay for that bill. Um, or if it's later in the spring, you would have it as something as part of annual topic, so you'd have to, it's similar to what happens at town meeting when. Uh, police department has a bill that comes in late, or fire department, or D P W, sometimes will have a bill that comes in way after the fiscal year, and they have to be paid the following year. Uh, so if they have something that comes in, say in September, that was supposed to be paid by June thirtieth, but never came in until September. Then that will typically go on annual town meeting in May, we play. Uh, but a situation like this could be a special town meeting, which would involve the entire community coming to pay. One of our bills, which we really wanna avoid, you know, we haven't had that happen, but it could ask earmarked.
It could align it with regular time.
Yes, for sure.
How long does it take the state to get back to when you clarify for sure, and they're really?
Few weeks, yeah, they have the deadline, which I don't, Mike, do you remember the deadline is this year? Tomorrow, that's why Mary was so busy working on, okay, tomorrow's the deadline to apply, and then they'll review and we'll see.
And it sounds like a good idea to plan it, for sure, um, it would be uncertainty of the future state budgets, so.
For sure, yeah.
So the blue part then, do we need to decide on that right now as well, or are we just more supporting the spirit of this um, particle?
Um, I think you probably wanna decide that too.
Okay, so the blue piece would just would still go into the warrant book, it just wouldn't be a part of this.
The motion, right, so it would be part of the explanation of what why the art, the article is needed.
Yeah.
Because uh, in what? From what the attorney, the town attorney said is just um, duplicates what chapter forty, section thirteen, he says. So that would be there, but then you you describe it as part of, you know, the narrative that goes along with the the article, I mean. So like I said, you could do either one, either one's fine, but he didn't think that that was needed, did it? You know, if you wanna both of them all begin individually, or maybe go to the next one, or whatever works.
Um, why don't we do each one, okay, ask if anyone wants to carve any one out?
Yeah, I think there's already separate conversations that they have others, so.
Right, right. Yes, why don't I go one by one?
Okay.
That's okay. Um. And any comments on the?
I guess I don't see a problem with pulling it out, because I think it actually reads cleaner. If you, you know what I mean, like you read just the white part right now, it's a lot, I feel like it's a little bit. More palatable, if that makes sense?
The title will be in the blue?
Well, the blue would still be there, right, it just wouldn't be in the article.
Wouldn't be in the motion, it would be in the description of the article.
Yeah, I think as long as it's in the description of the article, but I do think it's helpful to understand it, but I guess for the line item.
Because I know everybody reads this.
I was gonna say the opposite, I didn't know if it doesn't hurt, just keep it there, because that night, people will just look at that piece and might not have studied the whole thing, so.
It's in the book though, right, that, because I was leaning, well, they, they, so it's the article, and then a little explain.
That's how, I was leaning towards you too, but it's still there in an easy to find place, like just.
It'll be right below the exact same place.
Oh, it's right below it. I agree, I agree, it's cleaner without it, but I was thinking it'd be like.
Yeah.
And one of us should be prepared to speak to it if it, if it comes up, Leo.
So are we voting for that one now, or we're gonna hear all three and then vote separately?
I think we should do them individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'll say it, I'll 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 ask, so is there a motion to accept Article fourteen as written?
Yeah, so I I would, I would just say use the name, not the number, because the number probably gonna change by town meeting.
Okay. There are motions to accept the article which reads, establish a special education recovery fund. With the stipulation that the items in blue would not be part of the article.
I'd like to amend to reserve.
Explanation, well.
Yeah, I'll amend to reserve fund, and then we'll uh. And I'll move that though, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
All right, the um. Article listed as Article fifteen is establish an elementary school mitigation, tax mitigation stabilization fund. Um, submitted by select board, warrant committee, and school committee. Uh, so this was an idea that came out of the warrant committee in which they would like to establish um, a stabilization fund that would help taxpayers. Um, if and when we either build a new elementary school or renovate the current Dale Street school, so they, their goal, and they, and. Michelle, please jump in, they talked about it the other night at the building committee, uh, is to get a sum of money. Almost like a savings account, almost like a down payment, so to speak, if you had a mortgage, that would be used to offset the cost to taxpayers. So if the, the project is fifteen million dollars, and they get five million dollars in this, then the taxpayers will only be responsible for forty-five million. So it's really try to to knock off the top of, you know, whatever the, the total cost of the renovation or new school build. Uh, to support the taxpayers and, and to show. M S B A and others that were, you know, were serious about building, were putting money away, that kind of thing, so I think that, that came from more committee. Uh, again, they're in a situation now, the town, where they have the most free cash that they've ever had, so they would, they would also um. If I understand correctly, seed this with, with some of the free.
Yeah, they said they would seed it with, um, I think they said seven fifty thousand, and then in the future, they would be looking at uh, proceeds from land sales. Um, they mentioned Hinkley Property, Hinkley North, possible additional parts of the hospital. Um, and just so everybody knows as well, this fund is not contingent or affiliated with the M S B A, this has to do with strictly just. If and when we get to a place where we're. Ready to pay for a school, this will help offset some of the the cost. Um, I also think he said something about really for the first three years, where taxpayers would be responsible for this, that's what they're looking at with this fund. Why is it? A school committee item, like why wouldn't it just be a select or a warrant?
It's joint.
I know, but. We don't fund it, I mean, I know it's for a school, but I'm just wondering why.
It's more endorsing it.
Got it.
Right, yeah, so it's sponsorship, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's more voting saying, we agree.
We agree, got it, versus we're putting this forward, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the only, we. When the article is finalized, do you still say a sum of money? Which is specified.
No, I think it will stay some.
But I think they'll tell us that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still working through some of it there.
So I think in the book, underneath it would say how much, maybe in the motion.
Okay, yeah.
It'll be part of it, yeah.
Other. Question. Uh, so is there a motion to accept the article which uh, the heading that reads, establish an elementary school tax mitigation stabilization?
So moved, Michelle.
Second.
I heard it will.
Second will.
Okay, second will, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, and the third one listed as Article twenty today, um, is the elementary school feasibility study funding. So this is similar to what's been at annual town meeting the last two years, uh, which allocates additional funds uh. To continue with a feasibility study for either a new Dale Street school or a uh, and rental uh, situation. So this is very similar language, we actually found last night at at building committee, there was a couple of duplication of land surveys and土地 survey in the motion, so they need to change that. Um, but it's, it, I I think they talked about seventy, seven fifty thousand last night?
I thought it was six fifty. He said that would be.
Right, you're right, exactly, you're right. So the town allocated uh, two hundred and fifty thousand in the last two years, so we were sitting on half a million right now. Uh, and and when we did our original feasibility study as part of the M S B A process. That was a little over a million dollars, we've been reimbursed by that from the state already, a little over three hundred thousand. Uh, but the issue is that if we, we we get into M S B A, we go through that process. They will not pay for feasible study, they pay once and only once, so they'll they'll get no reimbursement.
The one will still have to occur.
Right, exactly.
Findings from before, so.
Well, we can, we can use some of them, for sure, so we're, and I guess I don't mind reporting out about last night. Yeah, this uh, I I almost was gonna ask, bring that other S B C meeting, Jennifer Ford, this, this is part of the agenda. The articles, why don't we, can you kind of speak, talk about the conversation of around this, of actually around this stuff?
So. When this came up last night, I immediately asked a question about, because we are, we have a half million dollars, we spent fifteen thousand for a um. A study on enrollments uh, at the request of, you know, the school department, ourselves, Dr. Martin, to have a. Another, another set of eyes on accurate enrollment projections, uh, because that came up in the past, and so, which, which we voted on. Currently underway, um, the. Concern I shared yesterday evening was the efficiencies of these studies, right, we did do a very comprehensive feasibility study. Three years, four years ago, whatever it was, um, where. It did all the normal check of, know the boxes of identifying sites around town, and. Land samples and water tables, and you name it, surveying, and all kinds of things that should be able to be reused. My, my worry was is uh, appropriating these funds. Uh, going through another study, only to be accepted into the program again. And having to do it a third time, and to me, that would be, yeah, I would hope not, and I think that was the question I've made, so. Um, and then the sec, the backup question that we're, that the committee is actively working on, the communications committee, is to take the. Um, you know, uh. See where the town's palette is for being able to pay for building projects of this size, because obviously, it's, it's gone up quite a bit. Um. All the things that Mr. Warner warned us about, it's come to fruition, right? Um, and so that was my only concern, so I think the upside of supporting this is getting the money appropriated, that puts us in position to have the money. Uh, ready to go, uh, as we finish our discovery. Um, and engage with it, we are going to, at our next meeting, review the previous feasibility study, because the new members of the committee. Aren't familiar with all the work that was done, including designs, a lot of the questions they've asked in the meeting have all been answered in the past, so. Um, Mike Weber is going to lead us on a, a breakdown and a rundown of all the things we've done, and look at things as a committee together. So it should be very fruitful in the conversation. And back to the article, I think that I, I. I suspect that we will get questions of why we're even attempting to do this when it was voted down. Yeah. Because we did a year ago, somebody did stay up, stand up and ask that question, and it's a totally legit question. Um, I think the benefit of. Supporting this and getting the funds uh, voted in makes us more agile, so that in the event. That we are accepted this coming December. We don't have to wait to allocate funds at town meeting, we already have them allocated. So, and building on the work that we're already doing now with the funds we already have, so it makes us more agile, and it makes us attractive. Could make us attractive to M S B A, because we've taken those steps. So that is my thinking on it, I'm unpacked it, I, I know that. You know, people would want to question this for sure, uh, and I know they will, so we should be prepared to answer those, as well as the committee itself. And Mike Weber will be able to stand up and speak to it. Um, we can speak to it.
Yeah, I love the other thing that they said last night from talking to um, other districts that are doing this is a. Um, feasibility study right now is costing closer to one point five million, not the million that we paid. Um, so this, the these funds would get us closer to a million, not one point five, which is what it's costing now. And again, one of the things that we'll be doing at the next meeting is unpacking what happened with our previous study. And better understanding which pieces we need to, you know, what can we reuse? What needs to be redone, and maybe if some of them, I don't know, I feel like I read somewhere that some of them only last for X amount of time before they have to be redone again. Understanding where there might be an expiration date on any of these studies, and just getting a better, stronger, I guess, more detailed handle on. Where we're at with this, so we can um, address that.
But I think the, one of the things a previous study does is it gives us a framework to work on, it wasn't an M S B A funded framework, so. So as we follow those, most of it should be reused and whatever. Um, we even discussed hiring someone to. In a true feasibility study, kind of like a, a feasibility light to get started. Um, we are very lucky in this town to have many people who do this for a living. Um, and can advise us accordingly, uh, Tim Bonfari, of course, and Michael Wilan, uh, that is their day job, so. Uh. And so we were lucky before, and hopefully they will extend a little advice perhaps to the committee on a direction, like whoever, others could take that lead.
We did also spend a lot of time talking about this article last night, and in the end, um, the S B C did vote unanimously to support the article.
We did have a healthy conversation about this stuff.
Yeah, just end this reading again, and I I think, I mean, we've had this, it's been voted in, it's a three years running, it's the same language. And it doesn't, it's not like an all or nothing too, you could carve out and say, hey, we wanna do capacity analysis. You know, so sure, excuse me?
I guess.
I just picked out, it's just one that happened to, where my eyes went.
I think one of the.
Oh, but uh, the, I mean, you, it's not an all or nothing, right, the full usability.
I think one of the other things to keep in mind is, this does not say Dale Street, this is elementary school. Um, and one of the things that I've, you know, the committee, current committee has been targeted at the Dale Street school. I think one of the things that, in the event that we do not make M S B A again, or we dive into this, is having a true study on. All of our elementary schools about, you know, what our plans might be, and that we should use this opportunity for that, so, you know. I've spoken about it at length, through the last process, dark process, brought it up, others have brought it up around the configuration of our schools. Uh, the campus model and how we're doing it, you know, is this an opportunity to make adjustments to that? Maybe even on the Dale Memorial Campus, you know, that's right there, so that there is opportunities, and we like. It's not, I mean, it's a fine, I like the size of the classrooms and everything, but it's getting a little long, the two, you know, it's going to need some services. At some point in time, but what those are, we're not, we're not aware of, so. That's why I do think that this does kind of. I do appreciate the 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 pre-planning this town have gauged in the last, since I've looked here any, last six years at least. Uh, in some of these, preparing to at least spend money a little bit, so. Um, so I I would recommend to support it.
Right, I did, I didn't, I almost. I mean, I, I think that carries a lot of weight.
I would say, one of the other, one of the other conversations while we're talking about it, was the, how much? The M S B A funding would impact the project, so there has been some community members. Um, questioning whether or not we should even be using them as V A, why we would. And uh. And why some towns do and some towns haven't, right, that's merely anyone who does take, usually gets it, takes advantage of it, I haven't seen any that have not. Um. Even if it's, even if you're building something that M S B A won't fund, you just pay for that part yourself, right, it doesn't have to, you could still build the project, and there's a section of it, but. You're just a paper, right? So um. Now that was reviewed, and we did have a very comprehensive and wonderful presentation, um.
We can talk more about that if we get down the chat.
Yeah, as far as the art, because yeah, we, there was a little more conversation, but for the article, is there any other information that needs?
No.
So is there a motion to approve? The article uh, in the packet, and the title reads, elementary school feasibility study, I think. So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, okay, so. See, I am gonna make this suggestion, I should have. Okay, I don't know, that's.
It isn't the whole business, right?
Yeah, what I'm just wondering is, can we pull up mold business? Yeah, let's do the, just the overall update of the Medfield School Building Committee. Just because that will also help us, the kids that, you know, like, you give us the entire story.
The long one, are you ready?
Oh, yeah.
I did, I've got a lot of notes. Pairing it down, um.
Yeah, yeah, so this way though, you can do your notes, because I'm getting some of the notes are gonna be related.
Jump in any time.
I meant to do that.
Um, the S B C actually have met two times since the last time we've met, so we met on February twelfth. Um, and reviewed two quotes that were submitted for the demographic study. Future Think um, and demographic analytic advisors, um, we had reached out to McKibben Demographics, who also does work in this space. But they had too much on their plate at this time. The committee reviewed both proposals and ended up going with Future Think, um, the Future Think proposal is included in our meeting package today. Cost and school demographic experience were two of the major factors that we considered, and why we kind of went with them versus the other one. Um. Future Think also worked with Wellesley, so there's a sample report at the end of that proposal, just so everyone can kind of see what we're expected to get back. What we're paying for basically, um, at the February twelfth meeting. We also unanimously voted to submit an S O Y to the S, M S B A. Um, the warrant committee representative, Peter Michelson, said the warrant committee didn't officially vote, but is also in strong support of reapplying to the M S B A program. We met last night and had a presentation from Steve Callahan from the warrant committee, the presentation was titled, M S B A process. And big picture financial planning and modeling for a new school building. This is also in our meeting packets, um, and you can view the video from the S B C last night, or he did this presentation a couple of weeks ago for the warrant committee, so there's. Two videos you can watch if you wanna see Steve present on the topic. Um, it's a very thorough and comprehensive analysis on the cost of a school project in today's climate. And it also gives scenarios on tax implications to Medfield residents with and without M S B A funding. Um, Steve said last night that we can't talk enough about cost and fiscal app, impact to our residents. So that everyone as a whole understands the costs, and I think we can all agree that that's a really important thing, we need to make sure everyone understands and is educated on, and. I just wanna thank Steve for taking so much time to put this presentation together, because it really is um, very thorough. Um, the questions that he addresses in the presentation are around acceptable tax impact for residents, as well as the source of project funding. So there's some slides in there that talks about what the tax impact will look like for residents. A with or without M S B A funding, and then also some of the different project funding sources. Um, one of the things that stood out to me in Steve's modeling was that the estimates for the square footage in this, in a school. If we were to do it today, would be between eight hundred and fifty and nine hundred per square feet dollars, um, and our, our previous project that didn't pass. Was six hundred and seventy-one, so you can see that's already a pretty um, substantial jump in a pretty short amount of time. Um, another cost factor that Steve went into detail about last night, and this is kind of more included in the appendix. Was that M S B A has a history for what Steve termed as insurance for construction cost inflation. So we start a project today, and our estimate is a. So we start a project today and our estimate is a project is gonna cost X. But construction costs start to rise and the project is now over budget. MSBA has historically been helping towns with the difference, there was an article today in our. MASE Digest, if anybody flips through that, Andover, there was an article yesterday, Andover is receiving additional funds from the state for their MSBA project. Um. So I think it's another important financial factor to be mindful of. Because if we were in that scenario without MSBA funding, then, and we recognize that the construction costs were rising. You would either have to. Go back to the drawing board on the project you had in front of you and re-engineer parts of it, or you'd have to go to the town and ask for more money. Um, so just again, something to be, to be mindful of. The SBC is also joining Facebook, I think the page is almost finalized, but that'll be used for meeting updates and general info, and the next SBC meeting is. Wednesday, April third. Anything else?
Can't wait to see him on Insta.
Gonna ask last night, what other platforms they're looking at.
Lots of discussion on Facebook.
Yes.
Uh, no, nothing else to add. Yes, it's always saying that's the dollars.
Yeah. I think the other, the other, yeah, the two things that Steve highlighted as well from his data, he focused on schools that were building in the eastern part of the state, not the western part of the state. Because construction costs are so different. Between the east and west in Massachusetts and the builders in the room conferred with that, um, he also said to be mindful of. If someone's quoting a project to you, how long ago that project was, because costs have risen so quickly. And are anticipated, I think he has a parabolic curve in there that shows from the MSBA. Costs are anticipated.
Yeah, I think this, this slide is really something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really something to go through that and see. The completed projects and then see where we were and then see these, I mean, these, these two up here that are above nine hundred, he had Quincy at a thousand dollar square foot.
And all Quincy that he had a thousand dollar square foot is actually a. Reno. But only six percent of the school is being renovated and ninety-four percent is new, I think that's what he said, right? But it's a thousand dollars a square foot.
No, it's a facade. If you keep the, keep the pretty front and the low, the back.
Um, and I want to make sure, because we, we're gonna eventually circle back. The SOI.
Yeah.
Was there any? Talk or any, any other in the, within the SBC was proposed?
No, if anything, um, I think the sentiment, again, that's coming from the members of the Warrant Committee. Um, we've applied twice. It seems, um. We should continue to try, like, we haven't really, have we, have we tried enough to get back in, have we? Spent enough cycles trying to get back in yet before we can definitively say like. We're not, we're not in it, we're gonna go on a loan, on our own, um, the sentiment was, we wanted it to apply at least one more time, and all of the SBC members agreed as well.
I think a little step's become what the, the cost rising and how much our reimbursement is, how long does it take before those hit?
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm sure there's a, somebody with better map than me than one of the.
Right, right, where those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, outside even with the financial benefits, I also, yeah, there's, I mean, they bring discipline.
Right.
And, and how should process?
Structured.
Yeah, I mean, you could call him guardrails, some will say, hey, that. You lose. But, um, it's all, I can't, like, I, I'm more about betting on. Want to do this over and over and over.
Right.
With a few names, it seemed like they were the.
But reimbursement, the reason with Bert's establishment, there was a series of schools that were built in the late nineties, uh, mid to late nineties. Uh, renovations and whatnot that seriously. And I, my first year at Sharon was one of those projects that Sharon wants to. Newton North was an extreme in another direction. Um, where. You know, there was a well-known two hundred million dollar high school in two thousand and nine. And not a lot of preparation, that the appropriate amount of preparation was done for some of these schools. Um, and to ask the specific questions that, to make sure that. By the time it was done, it was actually soothing the, soothing the community for what they needed, so. The structure was set up for a specific reason, um. Because as much as, you know, um, you know, local folks in. Every town have a lot of interest and the best intentions, not asking the right questions, uh, there's a knowledge result, the best outcomes. So, and the state's putting money at that. And, and the New North piece, uh, that was the last, uh, field house, I think, that was. All about that Milton High School was the last field house, it's a built on, I'm just forgetting, something along those. Uh. So that was the reason for such a strict guideline. Um, and that, after going through it last time, this last time, from this perspective, sitting in the sea, I really did appreciate. Of the advisement of it, even with people we had on our committee, who are well-known, we can imagine. It's people who are not in that business, not having this, that's what the MSBA process does, so.
Yeah, so that's, like, if the MSB, it's a state agency, wants to fund it.
Right.
Wants to, wants your success.
It's actually what he said was, I mean, it was very, very clear, right? Like, like, I know I use the Sharon to dump a lot, but. They spent thirteen million dollars in nineteen ninety-seven, the old Sharon High School. Uh, they tore it down last year, right? So when it was done, it got, cut, cut, cut so much that. It didn't even replace the heating system in the building, so. But they did it, so, um, when we got into the first thing, the chair says is, you're building this building to last fifty years. Fifty years, it's gotta be. Meet the needs of your community for fifty years, and that's a really big way to look at it, so. Uh, so even with enrollment projections, it's hard to project up fifty years.
Yes.
And I think Tim's point is important that MSBA wants you to succeed.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, and I think that's probably why we have left that gate yet, because then also sure we're gonna succeed. And also sure that the town is on board with us, so, uh, there's still. Signs that the town is not fully on board, so I think that's why, you know, we need to make sure that. We can, if we want to go forward, we want to have the SOI, we want to submit that and get funding from MSBA. You have to really show that. It's something that the entire town wants, and. You know, they have signs that that's not the case. So, yeah, that, and that was kind of, which, which weaves into the other agenda, like, that the topic on the SOI, but we can stay on this. So. As we, you know, if we do move forward with the SOI. Um, what's the role of SBC within that? I mean, historically, it seems like it's been Dr. Marsen, a lot, awful lot of work, like, oh.
Um, the SBC are literally just an endorsement.
That's always, yeah.
Right.
That's also the endorsement that says, yes, we want to do it. I'm just more wondering, is there anything? Within that SOI? That can put us in a better position, the SOI is what they evaluate.
Right.
As to.
Yeah, but they evaluate the school, right? So they know that we need a new school, and that's very clear to them, I mean.
It's not getting any better.
It's just not, you know, we, we put capital in there because kids are going through there and it's still gonna be X amount of years and. You know, teachers still have to work every day in that building, so we've done it every summer just to do upgrades to that building. So they know we need it, so the SOI is the SOI, so it's. Whether they believe that this town is gonna support it, that's the bottom line.
So to that kind of where, where I'm going though, it's like, when you're saying there are some indicators of the town that support it. What I'm wondering is, what are the indicators that can be, you know, do we, or does the SBC, how do we?
Uh, what are some of those indicators? I'm curious, that's right now. Yes, I knew it. Is it because certain town members?
I, I would say that they just feel like, you know, that there's, there's not, uh, that there are, uh, certain members of the community that don't support it. And contact them. So I think that's, you know, that, that's where they're getting information.
Members a member.
You know, I think that's where they're, that's where they're at. So maybe playing back, members of the community could contact the MSBA, the agency. To say, don't accept our town. Or.
I don't know if they say that.
I'm not, I don't, I don't put words, I mean, I would, I would say if they're, you know, if they were to look at a. Select board. And hear a lot of, um, dispute and, and we don't need it because of this or that, maybe that would.
Sure, I think some of the evidence, I think, that might be helpful, was sharing, uh. The survey results that we, we have the SBC, but, uh.
Yeah.
Uh. Be, uh, if, if the art of the warrant articles are successful. Um, you know, the, uh, the feasibility dollars, the, uh, the fund.
Yeah, I tell you, we'll, when we left that meeting last August at Zoom, um, I thought we were. I mean, the feedback, we gave them all the information, but they told them about the allocations, SBCs meeting once a month. I mean, part of the reason why SBC doesn't have a, a huge part in SOI, because most communities don't have a SBC form until the SOI is accepted, right? It's not even an S, they're not even SBC, so, in fact, we have that, all those things are really positive. Um, and I thought, I really thought based on the feedback that we're gonna be, you know, one of the. One of the districts of school projects invited in, so did Christine Threewal, we both felt that way. So, you know, things happen and other. Other communities got ahead and. And we'll see what happens next, but a lot of it, maybe two high schools.
You know, yeah, there's, there's a lot of high schools in this last one, so.
Yeah, they take a lot of money.
No, so, so I, I, um. And any of the funds they had to back up the projects already in play too.
Yeah, no, that, that is, to me, yeah, they, they want to see, like, the survey results were fantastic, and I think we just want to continue to amplify. They're not gonna rush to. Support a community. Back in their program, they just had to build them.
Right.
Right.
If I was them, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be like, yes, that field, come back.
We gave you a process, we give you twenty-one million, you said, no, okay, there's a bunch of other places in these schools.
Right, and that.
That's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
It's not one community member or whatever, like, we voted it down. The town said, no.
Right.
So there, there's no rush to get us back.
Right, but I think the warrants and those things are, we're like, doing the best we can, we're putting our best foot forward.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, that, that's what I'm saying, and I don't think the town, regardless of MSBA, eventually the town has to go on. The funding, what we do, I'm not sure that the town wants to vote, like, that all twenty percent. You know, like, without, so then there's a little bit of a hurry up and wait. You know, the SBC, we, we're waiting, uh, because we really want to put our best foot forward, that would be like. And demonstrate to.
So that's not whether it's twenty percent or twenty-seven percent, whatever the number, I think we got, we added to, right? Additional percentage.
We did, yeah, yeah, we got up to forty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Like that, when it said that, it turned us.
So, one other thing that came up last night too, that a couple of members talked about is. If we do this mini feasibility study, is there a way to have the, whoever does that study say? Okay, if there's fifty million or sixty million or eighty million, what does that get us in today's dollars? You know, and, and give us, because I know that Michelle and I have talked about that people put things on. On social media, like, we should do this, we should do that, but no one really knows the real cost, so maybe we have an independent person come in and say. Yeah, for fifty million you can get this, you know, for seventy million you get this, for a hundred million you get that. At least we have an understanding of what we're looking at, so if, if the town does decide at some point that they want to go without MSBA. Have a pretty good idea what the X amount is gonna get you.
Right, what we can actually.
Yeah, well, we can actually afford it.
In these dollars.
Right.
It's like comparing to what someone else did even five years ago.
Right.
Irrelevant at this point.
Yeah, but they.
Because cost-wise.
Exactly.
Like, completely different.
Yeah, there was a lot of comparison to projects that were.
Years ago.
Yeah, the construction cost thing is crazy, and this, I don't know, I, I, I have this one slide, it's like, is this? This slide is with MSBN without, right? And this is what it affects us, right? With the dollar increase. So the question you said earlier of like, when do construction costs, I'll pace this. Like, I'm looking at something here that my taxes are gonna increase eighty-eight dollars with the funding and a hundred and seventy without it. That's not even dinner app basis. But I'm not, I'm not here to go against what the school, the SBC has said, because it seems like everyone wants it, but construction.
It's gonna be way more.
I mean, pick a number, but look at the construction costs, like.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I don't know, but it's just. The more this gets delayed, and we wait another round, another twelve months, stuff might cost more than what. Like, it's gonna cost it, like.
Well, that was my.
We had approved it before, we saw it cheaper.
Of course, but every time we wait, but I'm not on SBC and.
But it, but I think that's why, uh, what came up last night too, was trying to do something in parallel, starting to do this mini feasibility, so at least.
Yeah.
If, if we put us in a good position, if, if we don't get in December, we've already, we've done a lot of this work, and then maybe the town says, let's. Spend X amount on our own and do it, right? Which could happen.
Right, we don't have to them do all the pre-work, we already.
We're, we're kind of doing that in power, we're, we're not just. Sitting on our hands, waiting for MSBA to tell us in December, we're actually getting things done in the next eight months. And, and moving that direction, which I think is a, a good strategy.
It's to the point, you know, if we know we're gonna need to work on schools, right, you know. Throw it out there, maybe, maybe we do, like, Reno on our own Dale Street, uh, to make it work, because we're gonna have, we luck, uh, far behind it.
Right.
And, you know, and maybe that's the MSBA project.
Right.
You can't have two at the same time, right? So, and then. Yeah, that's just how it works.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for the update. So let's, um, go back, um, to make this one. We would take, uh, I mean, yes, I, we, um, it's worthwhile to take a vote. Right, so I asked you guys if, if you would like. If you'd like me to put together an SOI and get ready for submission or not, I mean, that's. The discussion today, and then, you know, we'll put something together, excuse me, if you want to, and then. We can bring it to the, the March twenty-first meeting for your official vote on that, and then we could, uh, get on the select board agenda at the beginning of April. I've already talked to Christine about that, but it, it really depends, whatever you folks want, do you need a vote for that? Sorry?
Yeah, let's vote for him to do a table.
Yeah, directly to, to us a lot, for sure, if you want that.
Yeah, lovely.
I do.
I think the SBC is. Can I motion to vote to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a motion to vote for Dr. Marsen to. Create an SOI, right?
Right, bring it to the next meeting for the official vote.
Second, second.
Okay, all in favor?
I would.
Great, thank you. Any other items since posting?
None, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Budget update. So in your materials, um, as you know, we had a meeting with the Warrant Committee last week, and, um, they have adjusted our target from. Uh, what we wanted to, at a four point one, they actually adjusted it up to four point seven, our budget was four point eight seven. Um, so that essentially means we need to cut about seventy thousand dollars out of our budget to make, seventy-one thousand to make. Their target, uh, which allows them to go into town meeting with a balanced budget. Uh, so I think that's something that we would like to work toward and support the Warrant Committee in that, uh, that's a base for it, increasing our target up to. Excuse me, four point seven. So one of the things that, like, when I put together was just some reduction options. Which is typically what we've done in the past, and we have to make, uh, budget cuts, we just provide options and you folks make the decision. Uh, as I said in the narrative, I would, I would recommend option one, because it really doesn't impact. Our, our, our staff or our programs at all. Uh, it, it essentially just, uh, reallocates money, uh, with our circuit breaker transportation, which. We didn't include in our, our first round of budget, because we didn't know if it was gonna be, uh, funded enough, but we now know it is. So we feel like we can just, um, increase that by seventy-one thousand, reduce the operation budget for special ed by seventy-one. And that will allow us to get to the four point seven percent. Uh, option two would eliminate positions, um, uh, point five, uh. TA, teaching assistant, uh, removing the, the one point O, high school, long-term sub. Um, and then point one TA at Wheelock in supplies as well, that gets us all to. The seventy-one thousand, and then option three, reducing utilities by twelve thousand, uh, level service, all supplies in the district. Uh, which would impact some of the plans that, that buildings have for next year. Uh, thirty-four thousand, a long-term sub again at the high school, the twenty thousand. And then Norfolk County tuition, which. Always appears in our budget, although it, it really shouldn't appear in our budget, it should appear in the town side, but I've been fighting that for eleven years. Um, that's five thousand dollars, so again, I would recommend. One, but we certainly, it's up to you at this point, I would like to reduce the seventy thousand.
It's the, it's the tuition for.
I'm sorry.
The Norfolk County tuition?
Um, that is for a student that goes there.
Oh, 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 the Aggie.
Yeah, the Aggie, yeah. But typically, uh, that appears always on the town or city side, it's always appear on the Medfield Public School side, and we. I don't have the argument anymore.
If the town is in the county, we have to pay tuition to those.
I like option one.
I like option one, so it seems like we're not really reducing.
It's not gonna hurt anything.
Right, exactly. It's like it's netting out, and then we can still find those other items that we'd have to cut an option to or option three, so.
If there's any other comment, and one thing I forgot, just given that this is related to budget. I'm just asking quickly, is there any, or is there any other comments before we?
I have a comment just in.
Comments, questions, discussion.
Yeah, no, I just wanna thank the administration for the last three years of their diligence on the budget. Some of you might know, I'm working with school districts. Uh in the Commonwealth as a consultant and uh as an administrator currently and. Many of them are facing because of um. Because of planning, snap leaves and whatnot, that they are facing two point four million shortfalls and. Uh are in the process of laying people off, allowing them to know they're not gonna have a job next year. Um, which was my meeting this afternoon, the current district I'm working with. Um, so and I, you know, and they ask me if how's it in your district, and I get embarrassed to say. Uh we had to find seventy thousand. And um, so and that the testament today that my wife said to make sure I bring up and think, you know, what. The foresight that we had, although we didn't get as much as our funds as some of these other districts did. We did get some and we did plan for it, because it has been on our radar ever since we took it. So, uh I just wanna. Just give kudos for that, um because it is definitely wearing its head, and I'm sure Dr. Marsen's peers.
I sure am. Thank you. It is, you know, also strong support by the town too. That's a.
Town is always bad at education and continues to do that with supporting our budget, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, so um is there any one out there, is there any public comment on that topic?
Um if anybody online wants to uh speak about the budget before we vote, please just raise your hand.
Okay. So um then let me make sure that we're correctly, so. Um, is there a motion to approve the updated budget number? In the packet, which is forty three million, one hundred twelve thousand, four hundred eleven dollars. Using option one. Um, as outlined in the packet.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Communic- community engagement and communication.
Sure. Um so Leo and I were on for the informal conversation on Zoom on February twenty eighth. Um we had, it was, yep, no one pre-registered and no one attended, so Leo and I were on for about twenty minutes and then signed off. Uh the next and final informal conversation for the school year will be held in person. Um in the warrant committee room at Town Hall on Thursday, April fourth at ten AM. Um I didn't go to the Memorial PTO meeting last night, because I was at the SBC, but I touched base with Kelly just to get a quick update on. Memorial, um and they have ordered the next installment for their playground, which is going to be a rope venture vertex climber. It'll be installed over the summer. The cost of the structure and installation was thirty five, thirty four thousand and is funded by an MCP grant. Uh twenty thousand and Memorial PTO grant of fourteen thousand, so it's pretty cool. Um the PTO is also bringing back Discovery Museum's traveling science program, so the kindergartners and first graders will each get. Um a special class on that, and I know that was a big hit when it was there a few years ago. Um they're also, the beautific- the PTO beautification committee is also working on some stuff with the playground. Um the goal overall is to be able to give the kids more options and things to do at recess. And they are looking for playground equipment donations for the preschool play area at both We Lock and Memorial, so. If anyone has anything to donate to either of those, that would be appreciated. Well, I have for that. Anyone else has updates they wanna share?
For to go into We Lock PTO. Friday, fingers crossed. But no, other than that, I think we continue to work. I saw a recent post, you know, putting out. Which actually I think is the next item anyways, school start time committee. Continuing to get, to get engagement on those.
Yeah. Positive.
Yeah, no, that's great. Okay, uh yes, school start time committee update.
So uh just at one meeting so far, um we. Kind of just talked about like the why are we looking at this? So other districts have have made the change. Um and the the science is is. But uh we know I don't have a large vocabulary, un- undisputable, unknown, like the the science is what it is, right? Like how the kids circadian rhythms are changing, it is, it is uh. Better for them if we could start school at eleven o'clock or ten o'clock, it's not possible. Um we're fortunate, we have a couple of community members that are experts in this field. Um so we just talked about like why we're doing it, talked about the science behind it, and now we're looking at like all the logistics. So for our community specifically, is it something um that that we can do? Um if the logistics makes sense and it works for our teachers and our families and our students. Um and we're just working towards, you know, giving a recommendation, uh let's see. To Dr. Marsden. So the committee works to give a recommendation to Dr. Marsden. See if he'll recommend it to us at the school committee. Sorry, a couple of steps there, I'm still trying to figure out, but. Just the first meeting, we're gonna create like kind of subcommittees for each of our logistical challenges or things that might come up. And uh you know, well, more as we're going, but just kind of a first opening meeting.
Did any of the committee members of for the school start time committee, did they have any questions or things that they had heard that were surprising to you? Cause I feel like you and I have talked a lot about this, so I know that we, you know, looked at a lot of the different things. That was the table I was at, because I filled in for ten. Um I think. The like concern that came up with the question a lot was like. How would working parents deal with this? What happens to the elementary schools? Do we just flip the times? Like I think it was all about the logistics of how it would actually work. Okay. Like they, like in the granular, like what time would like Memorial start? What time would my kid be at the bus? How would the bus crews work? Like really just wanting to understand that operational piece.
So, yeah, so yes, but so like not, not, not surprising, right? Like I think that's what. Those are the concerns, but not surprises are things that like other districts haven't gone through. The the one uh for me that I've learned from some uh people living in the community that are teachers elsewhere. Was I thought like since the whole tri valley has moved back, I'm like, that won't be an issue, but it still is a little bit because of. Uh sunlight and field limitations and hockey limitations. So that was one for me that I was like, oh, if we're like the last school to do in the tri valley, the the school and like, uh excuse me, the athletics and. Um extracurriculars, like people already figured that out, so we can follow their model, but there's still an impact there pushing it later. So so we'll work and uh you know, talk to Mr. Scott and we'll 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 work with the other districts, but that that's still a surprise to me that I thought. Being kind of last to the dance would 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 be a little easier, but we still have a lot to look at.
Yeah, the sub varsity is playing more on weekends than they ever have before, you know, because it's the space, you know, the the games start later. Uh darkness sets in, or they just, you know, they don't have enough, in our field space is very limited here, so. But you're right, I mean, everyone else has done it. We we still, it's an issue for us already, because everyone else has done it, so we do away games, we're starting later. But the fact that so varsity would then have to play on weekends a lot more than they do now. And it would impact youth sports as well, because we'll be going later. We'll start later, we'll go later in the day, so they usually come into the gyms, the baseball fields. It's gonna impact them a bit too. Which other towns have gone through. Just um high level, and I think this is more towards you. Since what is the, like, the process around the series of meetings they're gonna have?
So we're looking at, uh as Will said, the subcommittee work at our next meeting next week. Uh folks were able to kind of look at some of the interest they had and uh. And and develop those, and develop those subcommittees um tomorrow, actually, so if you're on. Uh I know that that Robert and Mary are gonna be to do that. Um, and then, you know, look at different aspects of it, so see whether or not transportation. You know, is an issue and talk about the transportation, the sports, all those kinds of things. And then get a communication group, subcommittee to be be working on surveys for the community, open forums, all those kinds of things. So that we get as much information as we can before there's a recommendation to you. But we have one a month, and we've we've got to kind of organize out so that it will work to be a recommendation.
That's good. Thanks for uh going in as well. All the travel more on the Leo bus last year. And uh so Medfield policy review, I guess I'll take the lead. A little bit, so and I just had a. So um, I guess it's good news, bad news. Um the good news is the policy subcommittee, uh we've been working really hard through um towards the end of the fall and and. January, February and March. Um we've also asked Dr. Marsden, I think you have done a great deal of work. In a couple of minutes, we're gonna talk about the informational updates to A and B. But sometimes, you know, when we're looking at policies. Can we adhere to this? Right, what is it? Because what issues are you, might you hear? And some of these topics that would come up. You know, we flagged for Dr. Marsden, he said, yeah, I need to get together with the principals and whatnot. So so there has been a lot of work where it's felt like we were moving a little slowly. Um I always say right first, rush second. And uh so that, like for the last, whatever, three or four Fridays during beginning of the year. Um Jeff was in for a couple hours, Michael was in, you know, di- different folks to make sure. So. The good news is we as a policy subcommittee have now gone through the entire manual. And um so what you see in the packet right now are the updates to section A. And the updates to section B. Um we're putting those in as informational items for you to uh read through, we're not gonna discuss them. Anymore. Let me just talk about the overall process, then we'll talk about um the first reading on um. On the other uh, on the other sections. The um. The plan for us, and this is the bad news part, is we wanna make sure, you know, you're reviewing the changes, we have them nicely redlined. For us, in some cases, it might be confusing, you'll you'll see. The existing Medfield policy, you might see the standard MASC recommended policy, so sometimes you see one or the other. But the bottom line is you're able to see it and understand what the changes are. Um we ask, we would be asking you on each one of those to review the changes, discuss questions if there are any. Uh we can't promise all the answers, because there's a lot in there, uh but it might be going back uh out there. Uh but review the changes, discuss if there are, and eventually, again, we will vote each section. Um in form. Um which means we're saying we're ready to move this to the uh digital policy manual, but you wanna try to do that as a complete package. So um, the way we've at least I. Reorganized, because we had missed out, there was a, there was a meeting on three twenty one, which wasn't in there. So um but the way you're gonna see it is today, uh where we got informational on A and B. And first reading on C and D, like we've already done informational. And then on the twenty first meeting, we'd be bringing forward sections E, F and G. Um and then the following meeting, H and I, H and I are three one, and then the uh following meeting, J, K and L. So the theory is, because you have to do informational first reading and second reading, so. Theoretically, if we can bring them forward at that rate or that that pace, um we would be able to improve. The entire manual. Um I'm guessing there may be, you know, questions or things that come up in any given. Section that might slow it down, but uh we do have these type of schedule that would allow us to have everything approved by the end of the. So first, that, I know there's a lot to take in. Policy meetings are, you know, sometimes it's, I guess it's a long-winded way, we're proud of the work that you've done of. Um and you know, the downside is you will be getting a lot brought to your awareness. The next couple of months to to review.
Hey, I mean, thank you guys. I know you've put in a lot of time and effort, everybody's been involved with this, I recognize that, and I'm. Really excited that we're finally gonna be online, and it'll be searchable and much easier for um everybody, not just us, but the community as a whole. To be able to read the policies, compare them to other districts if they want, or MASC policy. Um, so what was the bad news?
The bad news is that there's there's more reading.
Given that we've, um given that everything's done, I know you and I talked about this at a high level, what are the thoughts about bringing, instead of. I recognize that staggering the vote makes sense for us, but um. I feel like there could be an advantage to having, instead of staggering the informational first reading and second reading, if everything's done. Could would we be open and considering everything? That, you know, for information right now that says four eleven or five six and moving it all to three twenty one.
Um great question, Leo, I'd like your opinion. So there's, the reason we originally stagger.
Yeah.
Is typically the reviews are being done as it's working its way through the voting cycle. And in our case, there was reasons that didn't occur.
Right.
We didn't wanna have, uh we didn't wanna vote on A and B with part of it not completely.
Right.
So that's kind of how they initially built the schedule. Um, but it's it's really up to.
The committee. Totally can, and and it is, but we also didn't realize we had the three twenty one meeting. So when we discussed it, no, I think, so. So I, that could be. It would be probably prudent to do it that way in the event that we needed an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you can carve anything out.
Um. Or we're gonna call another meeting at the end of June and they get it.
Yes, so so I'm I'm open, I think I I will say with with enthusiasm. Um, I I'm really pleased though, like we we had you, you, it's Tucker Morrison and Michael did their homework before. Brought in, I mean, it was a very thorough.
Yeah, there was a very, they collected information, brought it back, and we would review it again that. Uh the MS, MASC folks were were excellent in keeping that token at the end.
Um and I would ask, uh. It's also helped, Andre is a special help to keeping us honest and organized with that. I think the only uh today, we wouldn't do that. Uh today, we, today, and I I wanna um be able to proceed today as. As we prescribed, the only other um barrier would be making sure we get the updated.
From Jeff.
Yeah, there's there's sections from Jeff.
Okay.
So if we can, which I think we, we're making those changes that we, as we're in the room.
Okay.
So as long as we can do that, it would be, you know, it would be.
And we gave everybody one of those.
It would, it would be fine, you know, so so and that the only difference would be, yeah, we would say. Take sections um D through L as first reading.
Yeah.
Second reading. And uh we probably might as well keep A and B and C and D kind of working as well.
Right.
So uh it's I've, I'm open to that, if you guys are.
Yeah, like I said, I'm open to it.
So um and that doesn't need a vote or anything in terms of, I think it it just would be, uh would mean in the next meeting. The agenda is probably gonna be five, you know, a lot of pages.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's um, that's the overall process, and the other thing is just um. The sections C and D, this would be officially the first reading. Um, those have been included in the packet, and it's an opportunity to see if there's any questions. Uh from anybody about it. You know, if there are, we we can revise, and also revise the reading, you know, as part of the second meeting.
And to give you an idea of some of the things that were changed in there, the red line to see like. Finding a job description inside the policy, um that you see right, right on the brush one of them. Um, language changes to modernized language, there was. Just code thing, some of them, there was.
Small, old language.
Yeah, there's some old language that just kind of collected over the years. Um, we did some learning along the way of like. Well, about the first school and Call of Rock, the stone for the first school, it's in front of Nosh and Rock, or where the old Nosh and Rock is. Hmm. Stone that was the, that been stoned at the first school in that field. From the digital history that our schools, like many of our buildings, had a habit of burning down.
Town Hall twice.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, in our, our general rule has been. To um, changes that we make, um, if they're substantive, we, we. Bring them forward and discuss. You know, and and that's the norm, that that's what we can do with any of the policies. So. But okay, if there's no questions or comments, I'm not that surprised. Um, and uh. I kind of think as we get those, as we get those through, you know, the key need clarification between meetings. Those are also online. There's, there's very good discussion. The gym's done a nice job. So, okay, so that's um, the policy review. And then uh, the twenty-first, what we will do with second rating line. C and B and actually, actually both those.
Yes.
Okay.
Boys are down by six on four four. It was tied at half. I didn't have time. They were down by one the end of third. Now they're down by six in the fourth. That was eight minutes ago. So I don't know what. So that's a hike. Waiting for the update. So I keep looking at my phone and see what they updated.
At home?
Yeah.
You're streaming that game. Because I mean, we were talking policy.
I was listening. Well, I would actually, well, kindness week is in my. Even I, well, I guess, wait, are we, do you want to get my update now?
Good, good, good. I think the next, uh, yeah.
Kindness week is not next week, but the week after. And like the, one of the first days is uh. Like the compliment wall. So like in the lobby, there's like staff, freshmen, sophomores, junior seniors, and every single person gets a hand written compliment. But we write them on this sheet before. So I was looking at that to make sure people were doing that because they're too. That's when I was like, yeah, I wasn't sure.
I was not calling in any way, shape or form. And I, if you didn't give me the update, I was gonna ask you that.
So kindness week is, so that's what we're preparing.
Are there any compliments you really like?
Well, we have to get a list of like an updated one of those from like the secretary. So we did that though. It just takes a while to like get them from like, like to write them all out. It takes like a second to do that, but. Um, no, there are a lot of generic. We said it's like, it's like, you're so funny and nice for the beginning of the week and you have to redo it. So. I was going through that and then, um. We're also planning semi for the freshman and sophomores and being in under the speed. So it's March twenty-second. Yeah, so soon. Yeah.
I better cut this one for ten. Wait till you see what I put on the wall.
Oh, yeah? I don't know if it's worth, um, the one thing that is, um. Actually, I guess before, reason, is there anything else?
Well, I was looking at the future agenda items. I was.
Yeah, stay one second, because we'll, we'll hit that in a minute. Um, but I thought what uh, Dr. Morrison shared, the letter. From the hockey grandmother.
That's very nice. That was.
Yeah. I mean, it may take.
Are you gonna read that?
I, I was, I was thinking about it.
Well, set the context.
So um. I, I'm not trying to put you.
No, no, so um, Harga, uh, Mr. Scott and I got an email uh, the other day from a grandma who was at. Our hockey game in Wakefield. And she.
Here she said it was Cadillac.
I still think of that as Rodman.
Right.
Um. So yeah, so that they, you know, she was really impressed with the behavior of our kids on the ice and our fans and was just into just. So touched by it. I thought she wanted to send it, sent us a great email the next morning about. How impressed she was with the behavior of our kids and the school spirit and um, her grandson was the goalie uh, for the other team and thought that it was. He was treated well because you go to some of these other places and goalies get tormented at games and that kind of thing. So it. It was, it was a nice reflection of what our kids are like all the time. So it was really nice to see that. We don't usually get emails like that. Um, sometimes we'll get emails where. Opposing fans might complain. So it was really nice to get that. So I shared it to all of you so you can see.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read a portion of it. But yeah, I, I think it is, it's almost like the email from that hockey parent or grandmother. Yeah, uh, but it's I, I am the grandmother of a Wakefield high, high goalie.
Yeah, so she knows.
Played in the game. I am also an employee of the public schools. I was in attendance at the extremely exciting game between both warrior teams at Cadillac Arena. Tended to shootout. But may I start with my first experience with a large group of students, fans from Medfield that came to cheer on their home team? They were the most polite group I've ever come across in comparison to some of the games I attended over the season. They were kind and thoughtful as I navigated through their large crowd with my grandchildren to find a seat. One student even extended his hand to say welcome after I announced I was the other warrior fan. I'm not sure how to get around arena. I've been, I've seen such rude and uncalled for talk about those other chats. You know, she's seen other things. Um, yes, they were loudly cheering for their team, but who could blame them? The team was outstanding. But they're respectful every step of the way, way to go. Speaking of the hockey team, there were. They, the team, the hockey team, so that was all the fans. Which I think is, is pretty interesting. They too were a respectful group of young men who played very well, very intense game. The goalie, I believe, his last name was Duggan, was absolutely phenomenal. So then she, she talked a little bit about her grandson and the just general respect. So. I, I thought that really, really was nice to read. And you know, I, I mean, it's actually interesting just being in the town. If I haven't. A few times I've heard that, heard that from a builder recently came to our house, at my house. It's like. Medfield people are so polite, respectful, and he's like, compared to so many other towns, I love working. So uh, but that was, that was really interesting. Great. That's great. He took the time to do it, right? So people might feel that way, but would you take the extra?
Right, right.
Send an email, but I had to look up our email.
You guys, yeah.
Look up our emails, get them and then send.
I was like, did they win? They won. I was like in someone, we were all standing there. We're like, it's not a bad time. I was like, I have to go to school.
When the double overtime.
Double overtime and then in the shootout, it took them like each seven. It took so long. I was like.
The girls had double overtime that same night.
Oh, yeah, but it was, oh, they had an insane comeback. They were down like three, one of them.
They were.
In the last period, they scored like two goals.
So yeah, no, that was, uh, that was nice. So thank you for sharing. Thank you. Appreciate it as well. Um, so, okay, yeah, the other uh, last topic is future agenda items. Um, what we have is a summer workshop, which I think we would need to discuss here and uh, you may get a text. Uh, the next couple of days about possible dates, which I think we're able to do. Um, school chief's choice hearing, district fees, district communication update. And it is a good time. You can always ask, is there anything else that we should be?
I would just have the, be a full day kindergarten deep dive. We're gonna do that. See, guys. Doesn't really impact FY twenty-five that much, but just to see what it, how it. Models out for the next couple of years. Yeah, maybe include that information that, that was very interesting information that. If I read that correctly, that you sent uh, a way of. One of thirteen or fourteen districts that don't pay for it.
That's, that's still.
Still have, like it's such a minority now. Yep.
Okay.
That's interesting. Yeah, so that's um, it was very interesting.
So um, yeah, the next meeting, it would be two weeks away. And uh, what's a little different uh, than this than every other meeting? Uh, is I would like to take a roll call to go into a roll call vote.
Just pull you to that. Uh, that's, when it comes to the fees, I know there was discussion of a technology fee. With that, could we um, add uh, any? Statistics on breakage?
Sure.
Chromebook breakage.
Definitely.
Um, I know it's, I've seen it as an issue in numerous places that we've. Had a discussion with and then. I think the, um, just curious is how, how that would help and uh, you know, supplement.
Do we give everyone Chromebooks six through twelve or just the middle? Who gets Chromebooks?
Uh, two, two through twelve now.
Right, but they don't bring theirs home.
Right. They, they can choose where they wanna use their own or use a Chromebook.
Okay.
So many kids have their own Mac that they use or.
Got it. So in high school, you get the choice, like whole school, when they bring them home, you give everyone one, okay?
Yeah, I was just proud of the conversation.
Sure. Okay, so uh, typically we take a roll call vote to close the meeting and um, I think it's worthwhile. So the, the why behind it. So we're gonna take a roll call vote to go into executive session and not return that session. Um, the reason we're going to a executive session is discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health. Rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer. Or a staff member or individual. Uh, the individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body of these forty-eight hours, which has occurred. Prior to the proposed executive session, provided however, that notification may be waived upon written in the parts. So um, do I hear a motion to take a roll call vote to go into executive session and not return to session?
So moved.
All in favor?
One, one.
Tonight, yes.
Shalkert, yes.
Leo Brown, yes.
Will Horn, yes.
Diana Frashella, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.